Good evening, I want to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, April 4th, 2017 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Let's start by rising and saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'll entertain any motions from the board before we start on the agenda.
I move that the board just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91-A:3, numeral 2, Sections A through C, and that we keep all matters discussed confidential until in the opinion of the majority of the board, the circumstances no longer apply.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, under approval of minutes, can I get a motion to approve the public and non-public meeting minutes dated March 21st, 2017?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no errors and omissions? And/or omissions? Okay, we do have a bunch of stuff under scheduled business, but what I'd like to do is I see Mr. Gibbs has joined us here tonight, and I assume he's probably here for some other business that we don't have the agenda, so in the interest of your time, I know you've waited for us to come upstairs, is there anything you wanted to discuss with the board tonight?
I'd like to know if I can vote at town elections.
Could we ask you to go to the mic just so they can hear you on TV?
I'd like to know if I can vote at town elections.
Okay, could you explain that?
I came in to get an absentee ballot, and I was refused. It said I don't have an occupancy permit in town.
Okay.
And I came from the building department.
Okay.
So it sounds like he's running the election booths.
Right. I'm not, I don't know if that's true, I can't tell you this.
I have paperwork to back it up.
Okay. So, I can tell you this, we were aware a little bit from social media, and I think you had come in to talk to some folks downstairs when the clerk's office was open, so we definitely want to investigate this further, I'm sure as you're aware that-
Elections are over, I didn't get to vote. I am very disturbed about it.
But obviously, there are upcoming elections, we want to make sure we get this worked out and cleared up if there is indeed a problem. The town clerk, obviously, is the office that registers people to vote, so we'd want to work with them.
I think I've been registered here for a while.
Yeah.
I've lived in this town for 62 years.
Yeah, I'm sure that's true. So, I mean, I would ask that you do this, we have a complaint process where people send us a letter in writing, and we follow up those letters, we get you an answer-
It's easier to go through the Lawrence Eagle Tribune.
Yeah, I don't want to see you do that, you can obviously do that if you want to, but I'd like to encourage you to put your complaint in writing, and we'll follow up-
Why don't you write it out right now, and I'll sign it?
I think it'd be better if it was your words, but if you want to do so, we will follow up on it, and we'll get you an answer.
I'll just say that, and I'll sign that.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is the letter we saw.
Right? You want me to sign that, and that's the complaint?
Yeah, I mean, if the board has no objections to it.
I have no objections.
Oh, okay. So if you want to sign that, we'll give it to the town administrator to follow up on it.
Can I see that for one moment?
Yep. So like I said, our process is we will get back to you in writing, meet with you again if we need to as well, but we will get you an answer.
Okay, we have one more problem.
Sure.
I'm trying to register my motor home. Same problem.
So, obviously, the town clerk handles registrations as well, so it sounds like if we respond to this, we might get you the answer you need for both issues.
And this one here comes through the building department. I told you, he's the whole problem here. They're listening to the building inspector.
So this is, looks like the deputy town clerk sent you this, is that what it is?
I got that when I came in to try to register.
Your vehicle?
My vehicle, yes.
Okay. So, like I said, we've got both of these, and it sounds like residency is the issue. If we clear that up, we have an answer for you on both.
You want some more paperwork on it?
Yeah, if you want to leave it with the town administrator, that might help us in our investigation.
This one here is the one that Mary Jo gave me.
Now are these copies we can keep?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the, what she gave me there. And I looked it up, and that's what that means. And then I had problems, they're telling me I don't own property here. And here's the copy of the deed. Because someone has a problem of reading it. It says one-half interest was sold. One-half doesn't mean the whole thing. So somebody took my name off the property.
It's back on there now.
Well, it should have never came off.
Well, you know.
Yeah, so like I said, we're not going to solve anything here tonight, we need to talk to the proper people, so-
We have one other problem.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm being held in house arrest. I can't move my motor home off the property. It's being, I feel like I'm in jail, and this board is holding me, and that department.
Yeah, I'm sure that's not our intention to hold you hostage or-
No, I feel like I'm being in jail.
Yeah.
I can't leave my property.
It sounds like you're frustrated, and certainly we want to get to the bottom of everything, so-
How long before you get back with an answer?
I think we need to talk to some different parties, so I'd like to get back to you sooner rather than later. I'm going to say 10 days, estimate, just because-
Thursday night?
This Thursday night?
Yes.
Not this Thursday night, can't do it, can't promise that.
That'll be two weeks, I can't leave my property.
I apologize.
Is that what you're trying to tell me?
No, what I'm trying to tell you is it takes a while to get the answers you're looking for, is all I'm saying, so, I mean, that's it.
And you can't even tell me that if I can vote or not?
We can't, as the Board of Selectmen, can't tell you that. The town clerk's office tells you whether you can vote or not, but we're going to get to the bottom of that and get an answer.
She's already said I can't. And I asked her the other night, and she says I don't know anything about it, it's all up to the selectmen.
Yeah.
So everybody's pushing the broom here, around the room.
Yeah. We don't, we don't want it to be like that, we're going to get you a firm answer, like I said, in writing, I'm sounding like a broken record, so I'm going to kind of leave it here, that we're going to get you an answer, but I can't promise you an answer by Thursday night, it's going to be at least 10 days, but we will get you something in writing, and we'll meet with you again if we have to. But that's the best I can do for you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're good, Ron, right? Yeah, okay. So let's go to the agenda, and it looks like we have Agenda Item A, Review Budget Expense Report and Worksheet from Bookkeeper dated March 23rd, 2017. And Nancy, are you going to speak to this, or? This is just a general update to keep us-
It's your first quarter, yes.
Yeah.
So you've got all the figures for all the different budgets, and where we sit as of the first quarter.
Anybody have any thoughts on this? It looks like nothing out of the ordinary.
The only thing that I noticed was the, well, it's April, we have to hope there's no more snow.
I know.
I hear Kevin Collins has taken down the snowshoes, which means there won't be any more snow.
Okay.
I hope it's that easy. And I think we're doing a quarterly review of these, right, so?
Right.
So this is just our first look. So unless anybody has anything to point out, discuss, or look for, I'm going to move on. Alrighty then, so B, Item B, Sign 2017 Financial Report of the Town Budget as Recorded by Auditors.
This is the MS 535 that the auditors prepare after the audit is complete, and it summarizes all the budgets, what was appropriated, what was expended, and then it goes up to the Department of Revenue.
Okay.
I'll move that we sign the MS 535?
MS 535, yep.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want him to do this one too?
Yes, and also, I completed the, it's in the folder, I think, Matt?
It's in the pink one.
It's the appropriations that were voted.
Or red one, yeah, red one, sorry.
So I completed that one yesterday, and the board needs to sign that one as well, so it didn't make it on the agenda.
Okay, so this is what? That one's gone.
So we need a motion on this?
Yes, to sign.
Just the, the, so we don't have to go through each one, it's just the MS 535?
Yep, that's the one that the auditors prepared.
Okay, so that was the one we just, MS 232?
Yep, 232. That's the appropriations of what was voted at town meetings.
So can I get a motion?
Okay, I'll move that we sign the MS 232 for filing with the state.
Could I get a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want to note that if anybody totaled it up, the total appropriations-
Yes, I did.
-that was voted on was $4,947,164.
Sorry. I thought you were asking if I totaled it. You were given the total, sorry.
I was giving the total.
All right. So, now moving on to C, and as I stated before the meeting, to a couple of the selectmen, I hope C can take us about 30 seconds to go through, this is transfer station hours for this Easter Sunday. Anybody want to make a motion about this?
I move to close transfer station on Easter Sunday, so that those who want to spend that time with their families can, and they, any workers that would normally be scheduled for that day, be given the option to take PTO time, or make up the time on the previous Friday.
Second.
There we go.
So my discussion is, do we want to do, rather than a one-time motion here, is there?
I will take that under advisement, and amend it to say, until the board decides differently.
To continue it every year?
To continue until the board decides otherwise.
Is that still a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Here, even on right here in 2015, it said the board asked to update the personal policy that the item does not have to be revisited every year. So I think we need to put it on the policies also.
Yep, but now my motion says it will continue-
Going forward. All right, it looks like, moving on to D, Per RSA 3195B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of $25 from Charlotte Sentner to the Newton Food Pantry. Does anybody want a motion? So moved, okay. A second on that?
Second.
I think Larry was the first one there, so we'll give it to him.
I didn't.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and on E, Building Inspector Code Enforcement Discussion. That's you, Ron.
Good evening, Ron Lemire, Building Inspector. I'm here to inform you that Tina Cardoso has given her resignation to be effective April 8th, and any further code enforcement actions that need to be taken, I'll be handling in the interim, and I would like to come back to you at the next meeting for, to have some discussion on restructure.
Okay. Sounds like Tina had a new opportunity that she wanted to take, so-
Yes, she did.
Good for her.
Move to accept the resignation of Tina Cardoso with regret?
Second.
Discussion?
Now how long was she with the town?
Probably almost three years.
Three years?
Yeah, three and a half, this would have been, come out of four years.
All right, so any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that was F, that Mr. Doggett just took care of for us. So we're on to Item G, Ambulance Revolving Fund Expenditures Discussion, Warren Article 18 from 2010, which established the fund, so what do we have to discuss here?
The chief coming in for that, or?
No.
Nobody?
We have the Warren Article here, what's the question?
Well, there is a memo here.
Yeah, that was really for me and Kim, and we ran it by the chief, and he was fine with it if the board is. And I can basically just say, the revolving accounts, the board is the agents to the account, and when the, use the police details as an example, the board decided, rather than make the taxpayers pay for all the fuel for the cruises, that the money come from this account, because it's a money-earning account. Right now, there's two bills on the manifest, one is for the Medicare and Medicaid, to get that in place, and there's, I think it's like $500, and then there's the court fees for one of the things we're pursuing for $90, $90 or $98. So we were wondering if possibly, I know the account isn't really up there right now, it doesn't have that much, but it will eventually, and could we use the funds to help pay for that, and not take it from the taxpayers by using his budget? So these would be expenses-
These expenditures, or these expenses slash expenditures are directly related to the ambulance.
Right.
So because they're directly related to the ambulance, then ambulance revenue, in my opinion-
Right.
-should cover those expenses, rather than having it be more taxes from taxpayers.
Right.
So, I say yes, take them out of the ambulance revolving fund.
So I think what Kim and I were looking for, so we don't have to keep coming back to the board, because this was her thought, this makes sense, the chief was okay with that, but we didn't know if you might want to open it up a little bit more, like once it starts building up, not now, because there's not a lot in there, but maybe fuel when they gas up the ambulances, we don't have to do that, that's what the police do, but we're just trying to look outside of the box and try and let it, you know, work for itself.
I think as the ambulance progresses, that is exactly-
Okay.
-what will happen.
Okay.
I would like to see the ambulance become a self-funded endeavor-
Right.
-and potentially a excess revenue generator.
Because the way the Warren Article was set up was to purchase a new vehicle, or to use it for the equipment and stuff, for the ambulance.
Right, equipment, supplies, etc., so-
Yeah, yeah. So if you want, we can just go with those two invoices for now, and maybe discuss it again, or are you okay with the four items that we outlined? I mean, obviously, if there's fuel charges, we don't have the money in there, we're not going to do that. So we can wait till later and let it build up, or we can, you know-
Do you have a methodology for having a separate manifest for these items? Or?
What we do, if the board approves it, then the invoice automatically goes from the bookkeeper to the treasurer to cut the check out of that account. So we don't do a manifest, but we have the paper trail going back and forth from, you know, the deposit, and, you know, going to the treasurer.
Thank you.
Okay, I just, when we talk about transparency, that's one of those things that we have an issue on the school side, with them having things that people refer to as slush funds.
Oh, so you-
Money comes out of, and nobody knows when the expenditure happens.
Okay.
So I think that it probably properly should be done through a manifest procedure, since we're the agents of the-
I think that's probably a good idea for transparency, you know, because it could, if this goes the way we'd like to see it go, there's going to be a lot of this building up, so-
Right.
So we'll want to just see something that gets in front of us on a semi-regular basis.
Well, I was thinking possibly, while we have vendor manifests that we sign twice a month, and payroll manifests that we sign twice a month, they'd probably be quarterly.
Yep, yep.
Because we're not going, you know, the chief comes in, and he fills the gas tank, you know, how often are-
Yeah, yeah.
Is money going to be withdrawn? I mean, as agents, we're responsible for overseeing that.
But do you think that would work, like a quarterly manifest?
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
I mean, if we do that for this, we'd have to do it for all the other accounts.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, similar to what we just did with the budget expense reports in March, where we just did the review, we should have a similar-
Also review, but you wouldn't have to sign, because once you make the motion-
I like that better.
Once you make the motion, that gives us the authority, and everything is shown in the town report at year-end anyway, on the treasurer's side.
Yeah, but at least this will allow us to take a look at it on a quarterly basis, just like everything else.
For the first year, I'd be more comfortable with us actually paying a lot closer track, that way people out there can see, okay, is the ambulance, ambulance an expense, a burden on the tax dollar, or is it actually being able to maintain itself?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Whereas, I mean, we just went through a quarterly report on a 3-point-something-million-dollar budget-
Right, right.
And, you know, the only one comment was, you know, we have to be careful and hope that it doesn't snow. That doesn't help anybody out there able to know what we just looked at.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas with the ambulance, where it's been something that some people are warm about, some people are cold about, if we spend, you know, say we're going to spend through December of this year, doing a manifest for expenditures, we'll be able, people will be able to go back and say, yes, they're actually looking at this, and we will have an idea of the track record.
But then somehow, you have to see what's being taken in, and that's all confidential, so I'm not the money pot.
Not the amount.
Right.
The amount isn't confidential, just who it's from is confidential.
Right, I understand, but how do you generate a report when, you know, with just the revenue dollars?
Yeah, there's a revenue dollar, actually, it's not a report, that says we expended this, 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 and this, we signed that off, and this on the side of the page is a revenue column that says, okay, there were four ambulance runs, and it brought in $1,200 or $12,000, because we, you know, people out there have no idea what the cost of an ambulance is, and there are some people out there that have an idea that it is a, actually, I have one elderly lady who thought it was a frivolous expenditure. You know, there, things like ambulances are frivolous until you need them.
I just don't want to see it similar to our budget worksheet here, where we have our budget and expenses in our balance, and just one additional column for revenue.
And you could sit there, and one line item could be court filing fees, the other could be application fees.
Right.
So we're not mentioning any names.
Yeah.
It's just totals.
Yep.
I mean, I like that idea, because there's nothing we have to sign, and, you know, if we're going to do it for this account, we-
So it'd be informational, like what you've got there, you don't have to sign it.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
If that works for everybody. I don't think we need a-
I think we should sign for the first year, but that's just-
Now, now you're taking, you've got an elected treasurer who's dealing with all these accounts, that he's been given the authority-
I have no problem with the treasurer, I'm just thinking more about the appearance and being-
And that's why I agree, we should have the reports, and I mean, it is public information.
Right.
So, I mean, it would be available to anyone who wanted to see it, but my point is, we're signing the manifest because we're authorizing the treasurer to issue those checks.
Correct.
He does not need, or require, or want our signatures to issue checks for this out of a fund. So there's no reason really to sign it. Look at it, yes, but sign it, I don't think that's necessary. But yes, we do need to look at it, and make a conscious effort to actually look at it and see what it's doing.
Okay.
So I don't think we need a motion or anything for that, and that's just-
So, well, I guess we want to know, is it okay to pay those two bills out of the account?
I, I think so, I think they're within the scope of what it was meant for.
And the funds are there, correct?
Yes, yes.
Then it makes sense to-
So can I have a motion just for these two bills, for now, at least?
I'll move to pay these two bills out of the revolving account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just a bit of a discussion, you have a vendor manifest in front of you, I don't see why it could not be added to the vendor manifest with its-
Right. Be added to the manifest?
You take a vendor manifest, and that's the bottom that's coming out of the general fund, and then you have the next line saying what's coming out of the other fund. I just, it, it's something that the school district has been beaten up, and some might say rightfully so, that they have no, they have a $350,000 account, and they have no idea if a penny's been spent out of it or not, and when it was found out that money was spent out of it, it was like, okay, who authorized that expenditure?
Mm-hmm.
Technically, we can't spend funds in this town without somebody signing for it beside the treasurer.
But we, as a board, can also, when we review the report-
At that point, it's been spent.
...or spreadsheet, we can sit, well, yeah, of course.
That money has not been spent.
This is pretty much spent now as well.
No, that money, that-
As soon as we sign it, it's spent.
No, as soon as we sign it, the treasurer is authorized to pay it, but when we get a report, it's on, it will be on money that has already been paid out.
Yeah, but I think what the goal, what we're really looking for is, we're looking for things to stay in line and not go crazy. We're not looking for individual, like, oh, we're paying that court filing fee, that's $90, we want to stop that. I think what we're looking for is, you know, where something's getting crazy in this column, like, we've expended too much on that, so we need to talk to the fire chief about taking something that he's doing in that column that shouldn't be in there, and moving it somewhere else. So I think the report, even though it's stuff that was already spent, I still think it does the job.
Look on that manifest, you'll see, I believe there's an item for $3 and something cents.
Yeah, and what about that?
We have to sign that, or it cannot be paid.
But the revolving accounts, you guys are the agents to those accounts, and you say what can be paid out of it, what can't, just like the police details. You approve them paying the gas bills. You don't have to sign off, you've already approved the treasurer to do that.
I'm saying, for the first year at least, we should be looking at it more intently.
Well, that, and that's what Lisa said, but do you need-
I'll just vote now.
Do you need to sign? I'm just trying to get clarification.
Yeah, I think, I hear what you're saying, Jim, and I think, and we'll know in a second- Yeah, I think, I hear what you're saying, Jim, and I think, and we'll know in a second here when we call the vote, I, I think what, what the intent here is, I think the rest of us are comfortable with the approach here. I understand you want to have something more upfront and said for it, but.
I just believe we're shirking our duty.
Alright, so I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor? Aye?
If you don't mind, what am I voting on again? What was the actual motion?
I believe the motion was.
To pay the bills out of the.
Ambulance.
Ambulance fund, revolving fund.
Alright, so this is just to pay?
Yeah, to pay those, I'll vote, I will vote.
Aye.
Everybody's aye?
Aye.
Unanimous on that one? So.
I just wanted to make sure we, what we were voting on.
Alright, so let me talk with Kim, and we'll come up with the method that we think you're looking for. And you guys can take a look at it and see if you agree.
Alright, great.
Okay.
Cool. So, let me just click back to my agenda here. So it looks like we have announcements next. I don't think I have any announcements, is that?
No, you don't.
I, I would just like to make one announcement. I'd like to announce that this is more of a thank you to the, the town moderator. If anyone's been following the newspaper lately and TV, Channel 9 especially, the towns that moved their voting days because of the weather are now facing possible non-ratification, I guess you'd say, of their voting results, and, and all sorts of issues with the secretary of state. And I know it was a difficult decision on the part of the town moderator, but I'd like to thank him for keeping voting on the, on the day we had it, because despite what an incorrect newspaper article said on Saturday, Newton has none of these problems, none of these problems, because we're, we voted on the correct day. So I know it was tough for people with the weather, but I'm glad we don't have these headaches. I don't know.
I was just glad to see we had high turnout.
Yeah, and the turnout was very high, so.
Yes.
Okay, so that's my announcement. Other business? Any other business? I have one, but it's, do you have one, Jim?
No, I was just going to start on the other.
So I have on, you have other business? Oh, yeah, no, that's, in a sec, hold on to that. But the other business I wanted to bring up is, last meeting, two weeks ago, we voted to come in here this week and sign reappointments for members of the fire station building committee. But I think, and please somebody jump in here to back me up, I think based on the approach we're going to be taking, this committee, although they did an excellent job, I don't think we'll need them going forward. So I, I think we probably don't want to sign these appointments. Do we have agreement?
I, I do agree, and the reason is because we will be going with the construction manager model, and that construction manager will be reporting directly to the board. So neither he nor architect would be able to get decisions from the committee, so there wouldn't be a real purpose other than one more step in the way.
Right. And, and again, like I said, I'm sure everybody backs me up on this, the committee did an excellent job. We couldn't have gotten this far without them. But it just makes sense at this point to take another layer out of the process, so.
We have a fire station to build, based on their dedication and hard work, so.
Alright, so what I'm going to do is, I'm passing this all the way down. We have about 10,000 of these, so.
We each have a copy.
Oh, you do?
If we each do five, excluding the entire.
That's what I was going to say, is everybody do five and.
If you'd like to.
And pass it down.
Can I do this first?
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Alright. We got a air quality report on the police station with a couple of recommendations. Just, not that there's any serious issues, but it would actually help improve a couple of areas. So I would like to move to authorize the chief to look into and purchase the fan units for conference room and evidence room, not to exceed $300 per unit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
We'll give it to Jim, he was quicker.
One clarification, those are exhaust fan units.
Yes. I will add the exhaust to my fan unit.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, so moving on to the manifest.
Okay, I move that we sign the manifest dated April 4, 2017, in the amount of $10359.74.
Second?
I, I would like to take a moment to mention the fact that.
So that was Larry was the second discussion?
Okay, thank you.
Since it was only $100,000, it should be obvious, but there was no check to the Sanborn Regional School District in this manifest.
Those are only once a month.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign the payroll manifest for the pay period 3/19/17 through 4/1/17, with a pay date of 4/6/17.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign requisition number 2537 from the executive budget in the amount of $2,940 for the purchase of five replacement HP 250G5 laptops with three-year warranty. These will replace the failing tablet used by the board to select them.
Second.
Second for discussion. Just so you're aware, we had discussed the fact that these were going to be, needing to be replaced. They're already starting to have been having issues for several months now, different ones. They were a beta test, see if we would use them, see if we would reduce paper. They've served their purpose well. We now need to get equipment that we can actually have covered under warranty. And these are under the $500 per that we were looking to spend.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
And then, Mr. Chairman, for me, I would move to sign the forest fire training bill for Richard Dupree in the amount of $41.88.
Did you miss one?
You missed one.
Yeah, what did you?
Rec 2650?
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Well, since that's already on the.
Yeah, let's stick with the.
I will second your amendment.
My motion.
Your motion.
We're doing amendments. So this is, all those in favor for the training for Mr. Dupree?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Chairman, I would move signing the requisition 2650 from the forestry fire budget in the amount of $1,268.10 for the purchase of one portable radio. This will allow the fire warden to communicate with the fire department and dispatch.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I move to sign the forest fire training bill for Robert Zielinski in the amount of $49.29.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I move to sign the forest fire training bill for Edmund Miriam in the amount of $54.72.
Second.
We'll give it to Larry.
If they're all taking the same forest fire training, why is it all different prices?
They all get paid a different rate.
A different rate. Okay, I didn't know if that was for the class. Okay.
It's not the class, it's the.
It's the time spent at the training.
Oh, okay.
Good question. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to sign welfare voucher in the amount of $1,226.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. I move to sign veterans credit for MAP 8-3-11-16, effective 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I move to sign veterans credit for MAP 7-3-28-2, effective 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, that's Bob.
Okay, sign the veterans credit for MAP 4-5-14-15, effective 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Sign veterans credit for MAP 8-3-11-31, effective 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Sign veterans credit for MAP 8-3-11-40, effective 2017.
Second. Second.
I think that was Larry.
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous?
Sign veterans credit MAP 10-10-40, effective 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. I think that's Larry now, right? Was that five?
No, one more.
You can do the last one?
Yeah, we got to get him as full five.
Sign veterans credit for MAP 8-3-11-6, effective 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I think we need to get those jeopardy buzzers, see who's the quickest to get.
I know. It's getting to that extent. You don't win anything, just so you know, if you're the first.
You just get to do the second.
Alright, Larry?
I want to make a motion to reappoint for Theodore A. Picelsi and Carolyn J. Picelsi to the stewardship committee to expire on April 30, 2002.
2022?
22.
Second.
We're going to give that to Lisa, I think she was on the buzzer. Yeah, sorry, you're going to be quicker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Make a motion to reappointments for Jean Maggio and Julie Lemire to the Gale Library trustee alternate to expire on April 30, 2018.
Second.
That was Bob. I like how you waited even before the sentence was over. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Had to get one in.
Alright. Alright, we're crossing that one out.
Jump on the back.
Make a motion to sign appointment for Robert Krips and Christine.
Komitsky.
Komitsky to the cable committee to expire April 30, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Got two new members.
Yay!
That's great.
And make a motion to sign reappointments for Mary Allen and James L. Doggett to the Rockingham Planning Commission to expire April 30, 2020.
Second.
Discussion? No, just kidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have an abstain down there?
There's no last names, just.
I can actually vote in favor, I'm just agreeing to do the work.
It's Alan French and Michael Conley, sorry.
Hold on, Alan French?
Yeah, and Michael Conley.
Michael Conley?
To the Board of Appeals.
So make a motion to, is it reappoint or appoint?
It's reappointments.
Reappoint Alan French and Michael Conley to the Board of Appeals with expiration of March 30, 2020.
Second.
Discussion. We actually don't appoint to the board, that's the town moderator. We.
You're recommending.
We're recommending.
Recommending to the town moderator.
So you moved to recommend?
Recommend.
These two people?
These two people to the town moderator for the appointments to the Board of Appeals with expiration of March 30, 2020.
Is there still a second?
Still a second.
I didn't hear a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so. Any correspondence? No?
Thank you.
So, any other business before this, I guess, board?
Not too bad with the agenda tonight.
Honorable board.
Honorable board.
Move to adjourn?
Alright.
Second.
That, that's non-debatable. So, I learned that one from you, Jim. So. So that's it? Have a good evening, we'll, our next scheduled meeting is April?
18.
Eight?
April 15 is tax day.
15. Oh, wait, yeah, 18, sorry. My math was up.
14, so 18.
Next meeting on April 18. Thank you, everybody, good night.